Good evening and welcome to the January 4th, 2023. Happy New Year.
Good job.
Thank you. Meeting of the Gathersboro Planning Commission. Happy New Year, everybody. We'll get used to 2023 here shortly. And since somebody's writing checks anymore, that's not going to be the mistake you make this week, right? We don't have minutes tonight? Okay. So the first up is a consent agenda. We have one item for AFP-9470-2022, construction on the first floor and basement additions at 116 Alderwood Drive in the R90, medium density residential zone, amendment to final site plan. Jasmine, I think you're going to provide some explanation. We received some commentary and comment and testimony from the public. You wanted to be here for questions?
Yes, so I just want to note for the record, today and yesterday, staff received outside correspondence from a neighbor at 114 Alderwood Drive. That's happened in the record and has been forwarded to the planning commission for review.
Got it. And I think you all saw it.
Received.
Received. And the only question I wanted to bring up, and this is more for just us to nod and agree, we understand it the same way. The proposed addition to the, that's on the agenda, falls within the by right components or constraints of the zone. So there's very little we would do to change it, except maybe shape conditions that might have to do with, I don't know, site conditions or something like that, but that the actual proposal is within the constraints of the by right zone.
Yeah, so the R90 zone does have setback requirements and the addition, or is not encroaching within those setback requirements, so they need the zoning requirements in the R90 zone.
As well as any height limitations. I mean, pretty clear it's well below.
Yeah. Any questions on the consent agenda tonight?
Very straightforward. And the only other thing to note for the record is that some of the public testimony were, you know, comments on property maintenance and other things. This property is governed by an HOA, which is who would have jurisdiction over those sorts of things, right? So HOA has signed off on this, as I saw in the packet, so there's.
Yeah, any concerns about property maintenance that would be directed to HOA or Neighborhood Services?
Neighborhood Services would be part of the enforcement as well. Okay. All right, any other questions, concerns on the consent agenda? Is there a motion, please?
Chair and I move that we accept the consent agenda item AFP 9470-2022, as read into the record.
Just a clarification for the record, you are moving to approve it.
Approve, oh, sorry.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, that takes us to a recommendation to the Marin City Council. Laura, since there's two and there's a lot to it, why don't I just leave you to read it into the record instead of hearing it twice? Is that, that's okay?
Sure. This is planning commission recommendation for two applications. They're separate applications, but they are reviewed concurrently. So it's planning commission recommendation for zoning map amendment, application Z93582022, and schematic development plan, application SDP93552022. These applications were submitted for the six properties highlighted in red here. It's 539 South Frederick Avenue, 1 Central Avenue, and 101 Central Avenue, and then an additional three unaddressed parcels at the corner of South Frederick Avenue and Central Avenue. Application Z93582022 proposes to rezone the site from RA, low density residential, to CD corridor development, and this complies with both the master plan recommendations for the site, as well as the annexation agreement, which stated that the RA zoning established at the time of annexation was only intended to be a holding zone until the site redeveloped in the future. This is a rendering of the proposed SDP. This application proposes to redevelop the site with 72, two over two units. There is a stream, an associated stream valley buffer that trisects the site here, which is why the units are clustered into these three nodes. The application proposes a park space with trails in the center, taking advantage of the natural features on site. And the applicant is also proposing to dedicate a forest conservation easement, which will protect the park space and environmentally sensitive area while also providing an amenity to residents. As I mentioned before, actually, I think I forgot to mention, a consolidated joint public hearing for these applications was held on November 7th, 2022. This slide lists the comments and questions that came up during the public hearing. The applicant has provided a response statement addressing these comments, which was included in your packet as exhibit 57 in the SDP record, and exhibit 22 in the rezoning record. And I'll just briefly go over the comments that came up. So there were questions asked about the impacts of the stream valley buffer. Most of the impacts to the buffer are temporary, or they follow existing encroachments. And overall, the function of the buffer will be improved with the addition of tree plantings associated with the forest conservation easement, and also the installation of stormwater management facilities where none currently exist. But I can go over that a little bit more when I go over the applicant's environmental waiver request. Regarding the proposed tree removals, most of the trees slated for removal are in average or poor condition, and outside of the environmentally sensitive area. Also, with the dedication of the forest conservation easement, the applicant, as stated in their response, is proposing over 200 new tree plantings on site. There's a question about the potential for a connection to Bean Hill Court, which is this street here. As the applicant stated in their response, they do not own any of these properties here, so they would need to acquire those properties to establish any type of connection. But staff did discuss this with the Department of Public Works, and the site is designed such that a connection could be established in the future. There's a question about potential school fee. One of the schools serving the site, Gathersboro High School, is currently subject to a tier one fee. It was also asked whether the new high school in Crown would affect this. They have not completed a boundary study yet, so that does not have any impact on the fees at this time. A question was asked about the potential for stream restoration on the site. Staff consulted with the Department of Public Works about this, and stream restoration for this site is not recommended at this time. The muddy branch watershed study completed a few years ago classified the site in good condition. A member of the community suggested the installation of a community garden. This is not being the applicant's happy to explore at final site plan, and staff can work with them on that at the next stage. There were some concerns with parking. The applicant stated in their response that they are exceeding the minimum parking required on site by 42 spaces. So each unit has two parking spaces on the lot, and then there are an additional 42 on-street parking spaces, for an average of 2.6 spaces per unit. And then there were some questions about site access and circulation. I do just want to note that this project does have an approved traffic study, which concluded that all intersections will continue to operate at acceptable levels, and that there will be minimal impact on the surrounding transportation network. The applicant is proposing to install a concrete barrier here on Central Avenue to prevent illegal left turns. This is already a prohibitive movement currently, but the traffic studies show that there is an issue with folks still trying to make an illegal left turn there, so the concrete barrier will help prevent that, and then as a result, prevent queuing on Central Avenue, allowing efficient access in and out of the site there. There have been a few small changes to the plans since the public hearing that I just wanted to make note of. One of them is the addition of 11 parking spaces to Alley C, which is the area here. This was shown on the rendering during the public hearing, but it did not appear in the civil plan sets, and now the plans have been updated to show that. They've also been updated to show a new sidewalk connecting up to a playground proposed on the north end of the site. Another change is a slight increase to the encroachment of this corner of this alley into the stream valley buffer. There previously was an encroachment there, but it's increased by 70 square feet because this stick of units had to be shifted over a couple feet to accommodate utilities. And then lastly, the applicant is proposing to install a privacy fence and some screening on the north end of the property between the playground and the funeral home. It's not reflected in this rendering, but it does, it is reflected in the plan set. This was in response to comments we received from the owner of DeVal Funeral Home. He was concerned about folks using the playground, being able to see back of house operations of the funeral home. So the applicant is proposing some screening there, and also they provided a sightline exhibit that shows views, the sightline from the playground looking towards the back of the funeral home, and how the screening will help block those views. This slide shows conceptual architecture. The CD zone does not require design guidelines, but the applicant has provided some elevation notes and notes on the key lot plan that can serve as binding elements. Staff has proposed a condition, which you'll see at the end regarding this. The notes here primarily address materials and treatment of the high visibility elevations. So the materials proposed are brick and vinyl siding. And then the treatment of the full high visibility elevations, which are the ones indicated in red on this graphic, the applicant is proposing a brick water table that will extend all the way around to the rear corner of the property. And then for the partial high visibility elevations, which are marked in blue, the applicant is proposing a brick water table that will extend to the end of the pedestrian sightline. And then they're also showing here that adjacent and confronting elevations will be different, so you will not see the same elevation next to each other or across the street. The applicant is requesting environmental road code height and parking waivers along with its application. The environmental constraints on this site make it difficult to redevelop as envisioned in the master plan without granting some type of waiver. For the environmental waiver, that is what the graphic on the screen is showing, they're requesting both temporary and permanent encroachments into the stream valley buffer. So the blue areas show the permanent encroachments. It's paving right at the entrance, the corner of this alley, the stream crossing over here, and this follows an existing driveway, and then also a new sidewalk along Central. But no structures will encroach into the stream valley buffer. The green area is temporary grading impacts, orange is demolition. There are a couple structures currently out there that are in the stream valley buffer. And then the pink is utility and stormwater management facilities. To compensate for this, as I mentioned previously, they are proposing to dedicate a two and a quarter acre forest conservation easement, which will improve upon current conditions. It's currently mostly lawn panel. There's no forest on site, so they are proposing twice the required amount of afforestation on site, which will enhance the function of the stream valley buffer. The road code waiver and parking waiver requests are intended to reduce encroachments into the buffer while also maintaining safe operations. So the parking waiver is just to reduce the driveway length from 24 feet to 20 feet, which is already currently allowed in the MXD zone. The road code waiver is requesting to eliminate a few elements mainly within the area that is in the stream valley buffer. So for instance, over here, eliminating on-street parking and the buffer between the sidewalk and the road to help reduce impacts to the environmentally sensitive area. And then the height waiver is to accommodate the two over two building type. The CD zone in the Southern Residential District where this is located allows up to three stories or 35 feet by right, or up to four stories or 48 feet with a waiver. Oh, and one other thing I wanted to mention with the waiver requests, city code does not require planning commission to make recommendations on these, but if you would like to provide comments, staff can include those in the CPC memo to Mayor and Council. And then staff recommendations. Staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of the zoning map application to the Mayor and Council with no conditions. And then for the SDP application, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of the SDP to the Mayor and Council with these five conditions. The first two just have to do with minor cleanup items that need to be addressed prior to signature. The third one, there is a county slope easement that needs to be extinguished. The fourth one, I want to point out, this is a change from what you saw in your packet. Staff just revised the language a little to make it a little less specific. The impacts that they are making to the stream channel require approval from Mayor and Department of the Environment. So staff is requesting the applicant to provide a letter from MDE acknowledging that those impacts can be authorized prior to final site plan approval. And then the last condition has to do with the elevation notes requiring architectural elevations at final site plan to reflect the elevation and key lot plan notes established on this SDP. And that's all I have. Staff, as well as the applicant's team, is here and available to answer questions.
Thank you, Laura. So our record is closed. We're in discussion or questions for clarification tonight. Who wants to start with questions or comments?
I've got one question for staff, more than anything, that has to do with limitations on what can exist within the stream valley buffer. Something like a playground with impervious surface. I'm assuming that that would not be permitted within the stream valley buffer. Is that correct?
I will call Rob to the podium for this question, the environmental expert.
I just fell asleep, so I'm hobbling. You are correct. No impervious surface without an environmental waiver. That's always sort of off balance, so. But they could do a playground if we don't have footings, don't have impervious surface, because the goal for what's being in the stream valley buffer is a category two conservation easement, which we wanted to do intentionally. So we can put things like benches, pergolas, and even playground equipment that may be movable or doesn't have an impervious component. So, you know, mulch, mulch playgrounds, things like that could all go within there.
That would be my only comment slash question, whether we can leave the door open for the applicant, you know, at final site plan to possibly look at options for locating that playground, really where it wants to be, which is part of the central lawn park setting and not, you know, tucked back in a corner. That's my only real comment.
A lot of these issues, I think Laura alluded to, will be resolved at final site plan. You know, the final planting plans, final programming of this. I mean, if there's the ability, you know, if we can get potentially the community garden or even two playgrounds in there, all of that will be resolved at final site plan.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everyone's clear that, you know, we've got a box on the plan that says playground here. From my perspective, we should make it very clear that there should be flexibility in where that box ends up at final site plan.
Yes.
Laura, two technical questions, and I do kind of a fundamental comment, I want the commission to comment on. But for SDP, we're in our recommendation for SDP, this is going to be considered a preliminary subdivision, right?
Yes.
So the placement of the buildings is established at this point, and the boundaries for each of the properties, individual properties are established.
Yes.
Okay. So commissioners, take a look with me, please, at the row of townhomes that are facing, the two over twos that are facing Frederick Avenue. Well, first, let me ask you this. Will these, I'm assuming these are all internal driveway, in the road code categories, are the, will the addresses of these homes be, what will they be? Will it be an internal road, or will it be Central and Frederick, or what?
Selective on this one. So the ones on Frederick Avenue will be addressed off Frederick Avenue because they're served only by an alley and it's not a muse, so we're not going to address those. The other sticks will actually be addressed off the public road that does the full L. So, and even the lower ones may possibly, we have to confer, obviously, with fire and rescue, things like that, at final site plan when we get beyond, you know, the plating stage. They may, in fact, there's a possibility either off the city public road or they'll be addressed off Central Avenue.
Okay. I'm in the software right now, because I'm thinking of sense of place, but you're trying to find what you're trying to find. All right, so that backs me into my discussion point, which is the seven, or excuse me, eight units, seven units, that are confronting Frederick Avenue, Frederick Road. And the fact that if you imagine coming south and your directions are to stop at, you know, 357 Frederick Avenue, it's that last townhouse, or last two over two, even worse if it's the upper version or something, I think deliveries, think, you know, emergency services, think any of this stuff, there's nowhere to stop. You know, I mean, and at this point, you're going downhill on a, which should be a relatively slow road, but it's not, and it's relatively congested and high traffic. So the scenario I'm worried about is that that row of town, two over twos, keep going, townhomes, the two over twos are not really in a place where they can be safely serviced. And the directions for somebody off a map, you know, an app, map app or something, is not going to take them to the alley, certainly not around back. And for things like a move in or a move out, or, you know, something that involves heavy or long or big trucks, there's really nowhere for them to go. And it would be one thing to say, well, that's an inconvenience they can work around, but what I'm more nervous about is the potential for safety issues on Frederick, Frederick Road. Is it avenue or road at this point? I guess it's avenue. So that's sort of the discussion point. I don't, I don't know how to say yes or no, when that is sort of lingering out there as a real structural question.
I can devil's advocate, if you'd like.
Yeah.
And say that because it's a public road that does the L through the site, it'll show up on your app. So if the, if you pass it, your app is going to recalculate and have you make the right into the, into the site, and do essentially what is a, you know, three right turns and get to the alley.
But there's still that moment when you've got to stop and service the front door of one of these units.
Yep, yep.
And that puts you right in.
But how is that different than any of the gardens or anything else that goes along?
They've all got parking lots, or they've got driveways that are relatively dedicated to the front doors.
Well, this one does too, about 80 feet past the end of the townhouse.
Yeah.
And it's a public road. If it was a private road, I'd be more worried.
Yeah.
And I hear you, I totally get what you're saying. And, and if, I think if 355 were a lesser road, it would probably be a bigger problem, right? You know, but 355 is what it is, and you've got to be a pretty daring soul to want to stop on 355, because you're not sure where the address is.
Well, if you're making a delivery, I'm not sure you would know any better. You know, I mean, I think you would see the door and you'd see the address and you'd stop.
Throw your four ways along, hop out. I'm, I'm less worried about somebody trying to find the house and oops, I missed it, but the delivery folks who are on the clock and are going to, you know, slam their brakes on, hop out, run and dash in 355, I think, I don't know. They're going to have to figure it out eventually, but, you know, figuring out how to send them to the back door.
And the point I would make in all this is I don't necessarily think that that takes those units off the table, but I wonder if there's another way to think about.
Address of a century.
Somehow figure out how to, how to design them. I mean, right now, they're fairly conventional configuration, and this might be crying out for something more custom, more tailored to what the constraints of the site are, especially for this corner, that may have great backs to Frederick, but having a front door confront, you know, an internal road that's addressed and safe and all that. So we're not approving architecture tonight, and, you know, that's, but it's something to think about as we move into final site plan that I don't necessarily want us to assume that the conventional two over twos that we've seen everywhere else that have done two over twos make it here on this site, that we should be expecting something that really does respond to the constraints of what's going on.
Okay.
Especially on that corner.
Yeah, especially on that corner. The others, I mean, I think you could imagine working in, again, fairly conventional ways with a front and a back and safe places to bail. So I, and I don't know where that, where that conversation plays out in what we do tonight, if it's commentary, if it's a condition, or what, what you all think are, but it's even valid, so I'm anxious to hear what you all have to say.
Yeah, I did my advocacy. Who's next?
I don't, for me, I don't think it has really any bearing on tonight. It's really the final site plan discussion when it comes. I mean, to that point, if I'm putting, putting little nuggets out there to be thought about and talked about at final site plan, looking at this with the, the sort of divided nature of the site, you almost wonder whether there are three sort of related but different identities to groups of buildings. It's not, it's not one development with a forest in the middle of it. But again, that's, that's an architectural, place making, final site plan issue.
The only thing to worry about is if the solution means that something about the dimension or the geometry of the units themselves needs to change. I mean, right now, they're hugging a site, a proposed subdivision that is whatever, 24 feet, 48 feet wide, whatever it is. And, you know, if it made sense to do something different to make all this work, the way we're talking about, that would shift, well, of course, it's preliminary, right? So it could, it could be shifted, it could be adjusted before too much went.
It can't be shifted slightly between now and final site plan.
Fair enough.
Or perhaps a cutout on 355, where you allow the park, allowing a, not a current park, which is enough of a footage that would allow a truck or something.
I think we need to keep in mind, there will be additional dedication because of 355 BRT. So one of the things to sort of keep in mind is, you know, the Plan BRT is shutting off all the medians. So the only places you'll be able to turn on 355 is Education, Deer Park, and then Southwestland. There is no other breaks in between. So some of the distance where you have stuff, if somebody's coming southbound on 355, they're going to have to turn at Deer Park, so they're going to be coming down Central to service this anyway. From the north, you know, we'll, we'll have stuff and it'll be shut off, so I think we can look, I think for the benefit of the applicant, if the commission wants to preemptively say, hey, these are the things we want to consider prior to final site plan, I think if you, you know, can be clear on what exactly you're trying to convey with this. But just keep in mind, I mean, the dynamics of 355 will change with the BRT.
But not anytime soon.
It's due to operate in six, five years.
But the relationship of these homes to the curb, that's not going to change. You know, the front door of those seven, two, three, four, five, six, eight, is it eight? Units, they're, that's not going to change with any of this that you're talking about. In fact, it might get worse because you're channeling, you know, the traffic has more of an uninterrupted shot down, down that leg of the road. So the scenario where somebody needs to get to one of these homes as a delivery, as a service, as a, you know, dropping somebody off, whatever it might be, that's the scenario I'm concerned about, that there's pressure to do, to have access to the homes from 355, and there's no way to do it safely, just by natural patterns of, you know, using an address, if that's their address, right? To find the front door.
So could we phrase it something a little more in the middle to say, look, you know, applicant to analyze condition for, you know, potential stoppage along 355? And I think what we're trying to encourage is that nobody ever stops.
Right.
You don't pull over temporarily, you don't stop for a second, nobody ever stops, and has any inclination to stop. And we've done what we can architecturally to make sure that there's not any encouragement to stop.
And it might be something about the way the units themselves have more of a relationship to the internal street than they do 355, except architecturally, they won't look, you know, they won't, they belong in a suite. All this is a way to say, that's, again, something to preemptively look at for the final site plan, that I think we'd expect to be.
As the angel's advocate, there's, because it's a single loaded alley, there's no reason for the rear loaded town to be, you know, a preemptive constraint.
Correct.
Right, so it's not a necessary architectural element to have a rear loaded town if you have a one-sided alley. So I think it, it opens up some architectural opportunities for.
That's right.
Creating a different, a different frontage.
Okay, so I dominated that conversation. Anything else?
No, I concur with Commissioner Westall about the moving the park, perhaps. What kind of demarcation or fencing, or is it going to be live fencing between the funeral home and the proposed amenity right now? What is it supposed to be?
So that is a final site plan detail. As shown on the plans now, it's a, I believe, a six-foot tall wooden privacy fence with 15-foot at maturity trees planted along to provide some screening there.
I'd also like to consider, as Commissioner Westall said, moving it or perhaps adding up more amenities within the allowable area of the Stream Valley, is somewhere in the green part, because I think it's a great utilization of an area. First of all, that really is a difficult piece to build on. Secondly, it does give continuity, more continuity on Frederick Avenue as far as the CD zoning goes. And also, we heard just recently about the Walnut Hill Shopping Center expansion or redevelopment, and I think this is complementary to that. I think it's a great, great use of the property, so I encourage this project going forward at this point.
But just keep those poor people on Frederick Avenue safe.
Yes.
Actually, keep the Amazon guy safe.
The, so I'll just add two thoughts. One is that we have been desperate for, you know, middle housing in the city, and this is a wonderful application to see some larger units stacked in a more than a dense than a townhouse community, and it's really wonderful. This is a big area that the city needs. We see demographically, we need these units, and it's been very hard to get them built in the city, so this is really exciting. And then, second one, I'll just say, on, on the sort of, you know, garden thing, this is just general unsolicited pontification, but I think what you can sort of begin to treat those natural areas with are the large boulders, the kid-friendly, you know, natural improvements that aren't necessarily a playground with a dotted line around it, but can be, can be a landscape architecture in a traditional sense, in a very natural setting that allows kids to play and explore, and a little bit of drunk parenting, you know, so we keep putting it there. And I'm speaking for me, but they, so, you know, you allow for nice protected space in a natural environment for kids to actually creative. in a natural environment for kids to actually creative, creative play. So I would encourage that, and rather than a sort of defined, programmed fence, not fence, but, you know, dotted line space.
Second to everything that's been said, one final thing that I want to make sure we don't get tripped up at at final site plan when we are reviewing architecture are these blue lines for these secondary elevations that on the plan are drawn as almost the entire elevation, but I picked up on the note that that water tables and embellishments will stop at the line of the pedestrian sightline. So I want to make sure when we get to architecture, we don't have a water table that goes three feet and then just stops.
Arbitrary is unlawful.
Arbitrary, random, like, I did a study, the pedestrian sightline stops here, so we're going to just stop our water table in the middle of this window because that's the bare minimum. So I think that 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 little caveat makes me a little nervous of what we're going to see.
You know, though, I think in the in the staff analysis, there was the the note that there's no design guidelines, but we can make the material demarcations and some of the, some of the proppers for what it looks like binding at this point if we want. So that could be part of it, that.
So that is a proposed condition. The last condition listed that the elevations at final site plan must reflect the notes they included for the elevations in the key lot plan established as the schematic development plan, but the architecture can be refined further beyond that at final site plan.
Yeah, and I think you, I'd rather not prescribe it now, I'd rather see the architecture. And but and just to add to, you know, your thought is that, you know, we cherish our pedestrians here in the city and their and their experience, right? So these little penetrations in the in the sticks of towns, sticks of twos, two over twos, it's, I think they're greatly used particularly by our younger citizens and treating them with a little bit of respect is is a wonderful idea. So we have that in the in the application, in the S, in the schematic plan, but it's, but the details of it are really going to be dependent on the architecture, so wait for the details, would be my recommendation.
So we had a list of waiver, a number of waivers that we're asked to consider in the recommendation as well. One of the, one of them is the driveways. And of course, there's a lot of pressure on parking here, so driveways are going to be important, right? But I know too that where these get built, there ends up being more encroachments like posts for decks that are on the second floor, condensing units, gas meters, incidental, you know, whatever's out there, cable TV.
HBC.
Files, whatever. Things start popping up that encroach on the clearances for actually using the driveways. And I, again, part of the commentary and caution is that at final site plan, if we're going to, if we're going to endorse a shorter driveway, there really can't be anything else to get in the way of using them, whatever, whatever those things might be.
Clear, clear means clear.
Yeah.
And I know on the plans, on the site plan, they did provide like a typical drawing showing the driveway and where the location of the HVAC units and the posts would be. So that is something staff will make sure that will not interfere with functionality of the driveway.
Okay. Anything else on the waivers on?
I mean, again, I'm never a big fan of of encroaching on, you know, wet ones essentially, you know, stream buffers. But I think when you do it carefully and you're doing it with tremendous amount of gain, which we are, I think, with middle housing, I'm all for it. So I think it's a great compromise. The other, the other components, as you guys know, I'm a big fan of squeezing roads and squeezing parking, so I think both of those in my mind are great, are fantastic.
All right. Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate the fact that the calculations were done as temporary and permanent for the the stream valley buffer encroachments, and that that that's good. I mean, that they're, it nets out, again, not as, not as bad as it looks in the initial, initial calculation.
Even the majority of that ten thousand square feet of permanent is already a condition that's, that's a roadway now. It's just that now we're going to improve it, bring it up to modern standards and actually get, you know, a decent culvert under it, so.
Good point. So Laura, the comments and the potential influence are, or how will it will influence the final site plan development? Are you, is that captured well enough in the commentary? Your duty, conditions or anything more specific?
I think we are fine with the commentary you provided tonight.
Okay.
I don't know if you wanted to revise the architecture condition, but I think I can capture it in our CPC memo and also carry that forward with staff to work on them at final site plan.
Yeah, I think it's just making sure that, you know, architecture for those side elevations will be reviewed at final site plan. I don't want to prescribe.
Okay.
A dimension, I don't, like, they just need to design it sensitively and be prepared to present something that's not arbitrary sightline-based, you know, cut in materials.
Yes, staff will make.
Think about water tables, so.
Think about arbitrary.
Sounds good. All right, anything else?
No.
All right, so do you want two separate motions, Laura?
Yes, please.
Okay. So let's get lined up on the first, which is for the rezoning. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that based upon the evidence and the record and findings presented in the staff analysis, that we approve zoning map amendment Z nine three five eight dash twenty twenty-two to the mayor and city council with no conditions.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously, and is there a motion, please, on the recommendation to mayor and council on the SDP?
Mr. Chairman, based upon the evidence, the record, and findings presented in the staff analysis, I move that we approve schematic development plan SDP nine three five five dash twenty twenty-two to the mayor and city council with the five conditions. Is there any to the record?
Clarification for the record, it's a recommendation for approval?
Recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. Well, thank you, Laura, thank you.
I just want to ask, did you want to make any motions regarding any of the waivers or recommendations regarding the waiver requests?
Weren't they bumbled with the, what was that, the first?
So you do not have to make a recommendation or a formal motion.
Oh, that's right, you said that, yeah.
But if you wanted to provide specific comments or recommendations on them, you can, we can include it in our memo to council.
Do I amend the?
No.
No, it would just be additional comments.
So I would, I would like in your, in your memo to be, to add, if my, yeah, that we recommend the approval and that we.
Okay.
We analyze the trade-offs with what we're gaining here and think that particularly the ten thousand square feet of of encroachment is is a great opportunity to bring some denser housing of a different type to the city. So that's our trade-off. We're all for it. It should be in the menu, memo, that we not just arbitrarily support it, we encourage it, so.
Okay.
It's a great, great trade-off.
Agreed. I endorse that. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that, Laura. The next up is our, we have one item on the public hearing agenda tonight for ASDP dash nine four two three dash twenty twenty-two, subdivide the existing eighteen-point-six-two acre lot into one seven-point-five-five acre lot and one eleven-point-zero-seven acre lot at one five seven four zero Shady Grove Road in the MXD, MXD's developed zone. This is an amendment to the schematic development plan, and Sam Copeland is presenting for Sam. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. All right. Good evening, Planning Commission. This is a public hearing for amendment to schematic development plan ASDP dash nine four two three dash twenty twenty-two for the property addressed at one five seven four zero Shady Grove Road. The subject property is bounded by Gaither Road to the north, Shady Grove Road to the east, and Interstate two seventy to the south and west. The nineteen-point-six-two acre subject property is improved with a two-hundred-sixty-three-thousand, twenty-square-foot commercial shopping center and a one-thousand-one-hundred-nine space parking lot. The amendment to SDP application was submitted to the city planning and code administration on October twentieth, twenty twenty-two, and was designated as application number ASDP dash nine four two three dash twenty twenty-two. The subject amendment involves subdividing the existing shopping center into two lots, consolidating the specific square footage allotments for individual commercial uses, and including an additional twenty square feet of commercial uses that have already been built with previous approved final site plans. This amendment comes before Planning Commission as a public hearing pursuant to section twenty-four dash one ninety-eight C of the city code. Following a curse, courtesy review that was presented to the mayor and city council on December fifth, twenty twenty-two, the council deemed that the application has a minor effect and directed staff to have the amendment referred to the Planning Commission. The hearing was duly advertised in the December fifteenth and December twenty-second issues of the Washington Post, and the property was properly posted. Notice of the public hearing was also advertised on the city's webpage. There are currently thirty exhibits in the record file, and all exhibits are referenced in the exhibit list. All of the individual exhibits may be reviewed during the course of the meeting on the city's webpage or at the planning and code administration office during regular business hours. Any objections to any exhibits should be noted prior to the closing of the record, otherwise they will be deemed received into evidence. Since this is a minor amendment, staff is recommending that the commission both close the record and take final action on this application during tonight's meeting. A draft resolution has been included and is ready for final action should the commission so choose. Here to introduce the application is Phil Hummel with Miles and Stockbridge.
Great. Thanks, Sam.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Philip Hummel with the law firm of Miles and Stockbridge. Our firm represents the applicant and his management. To my right is Mike Moran, principal with Aries Management. As Mr. Copeland noted, the subject property is the shopping center known as the two-seventy Center located on Shady Grove Road, home to Home Depot, Best Buy, and other retailers. The purpose of the amendment, no physical changes, most importantly, are being proposed to the site or the existing improvements. The main purpose is to divide existing parcel eleven, which you see on the screen in front of you in the red thick outline, about nineteen acres, divide that existing lot into two lots, so the Home Depot here can be on its own lot. So you'll have the existing one lot outlined in the red, and the blue represents the new lot line to divide parcel eleven into lot one and lot two. For the reasons stated in the record, including exhibit twenty-five and the staff report, the amendment satisfies the required findings of section twenty-four, one sixty D ten B of the zoning ordinance. Applicant has reviewed staff's findings and the recommended conditions of approval and agrees with them. Applicant requests that the Planning Commission approve the amendment as recommended by city staff, and I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Sam and Greg for their assistance in this application. And I'll leave it, if Mr. Moran has anything to add.
No, nothing to add. Thanks for your time.
Great, thanks. Sam, if this moves forward, is there an amended site plan as well as a second step?
Not at the time. They would be doing a subject plat, a new plat of subdivision.
Okay. But there's nothing, I wouldn't say outstanding, but there's no concerns on the actual recorded site plan, or not recorded, but the approved site plan that we would want to be addressing as a second piece to this?
No, no concerns.
But it's been reviewed and, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other?
So just, just a general question. The division between the two lots doesn't create any other barriers as far as parking, as far as interference, as far as consumers going into this lot or going in and out or anything like that? It's strictly for books, I assume?
Correct. Yeah, it doesn't change the operation of the shopping center at all.
Because of staff's good notes to create the easements and, you know, it's actually, it's kind of fascinating to be, shared the notes, the staff wrote all over the applicant's initial application, it was kind of fun to read. But, but, so, entertaining, entertaining is my life gift. But it's, but I think in there you saw a lot of staff really protecting the ingress egress.
Just want to clarify that for the public, so that when they're watching this, they understand that this is not.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's on, it's in the records if somebody is out there watching, I don't know why they are, but if they're out there watching, it's a great application to look and see how staff goes through these applications, initial applications, very thoroughly and be able to put together good notes.
The website's going to crash now with people clicking.
Ten thousand hits a minute, so it's going to be, it's going to be amazing.
All right. Any other questions before we go to the public? All right, since this is a public hearing, tech team, would you please run the instructions for dialing in for those that want to?
If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Great, thanks. And while we're waiting to see if anybody does click in for that, is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to comment on this application? Okay, not a lot of hands shot up. So, in fact, none. And I don't see anybody clicking through with their hand up on the Zoom version of this. So let's go to the recommendation then, and we'll go from there.
Sure. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission close the record for application ASDP dash nine four two three dash twenty twenty-two and proceed with final action. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings in the final staff analysis, approve amendment to schematic development plan ASDP dash nine four two three dash twenty twenty-two and adopt the draft resolution with two conditions.
Any questions on the recommendation?
No.
Straightforward. Any concerns with the moving forward? All right?
No, very straightforward.
All right, good. If there's nothing, no concerns, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings in the final staff analysis, approve ASDP nine four two three twenty twenty-two with the two conditions as presented in the record.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sam, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll strike him in the parking lot, it's going to stop.
Thank you, Sam. This proposal's a thirty-foot fence.
Next up is our site plan agenda, and tonight we have one for AFP dash nine three six nine dash twenty twenty-two, construction of twelve ground-mounted solar panels in six fifty-five Watkins Mill Road in the I three industrial office park zone. This is amendment to final site plan, and presenting from staff is Jasmine Ford. Good evening again, Jasmine.
Good evening. So staffs before each present amendment to final site plan application AFP dash nine three six nine dash twenty twenty-two. The applicant's requesting approval for twelve ground-mounted solar panels adjacent to Watkins Mill Road, and the property is located at six five five Watkins Mill Road. This application comes before the Planning Commission in accordance with section twenty-four dash one seventy-two A, which requires the Planning Commission to grant amendments to site plans. On April twentieth of twenty twenty-two, the Planning Commission approved amendment to final site plan application AFP dash nine zero six six dash two thousand and twenty-two for the construction of six solar panel carports within the parking lot. So this project's the second and final phase of their solar panel project for Kaiser. The applicant's also requesting approval of forest conservation plan EMV dash nine three five one dash twenty twenty-two pursuant to chapter twenty-two of the city code. The Planning Commission must review and approve forest conservation plans, and now I will have the project team do their presentation this evening.
Great, thanks. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, thanks for your time. My name is Eric Partika, this is Nick Lang. I'm the Director of Business Development for Standard Solar. So this is our, our team that's in-house and then external experts that we're working with to develop this project. So this is a, I would say, northern, northwesterly view of the top of the Kaiser Gaithersburg facility, and then the green areas where we're proposing to put a ground-mounted solar facility. And that system, it would feed into the building, into the Kaiser facility. We would own and operate the solar farm and sell the electricity to Kaiser. This is a little more about engineering. It has the detail on the, sort of landscaping and the solar array itself, the sort of twelve items that you referenced, right? So those, those, each row has little solar panels inside of it from the, from the image there. But maybe stop here and just see if there's any questions about this, this concept.
I think so, do you appreciate me?
Okay. Sorry. Please pause. Sorry. Sorry.
We'll interrupt a bit, but just go ahead.
So the, the solar panels themselves are manufactured by a company called Canadian Solar. So we don't, we don't make any equipment, right? We, we own and operate it, we install it, but the equipment obviously comes from different places. The system size is four hundred and sixty-seven kilowatts DC. The also energy is a company that monitors, you get, you know, minute-by-minute production and performance of the system and the weather, letting us know how the system is working and making sure nothing's broken. The inverters convert, you know, the DC solar panels are DC-powered. We need inverters to convert them to AC power, which is what you get out of your outlet. And then the, the AC size is three hundred kilowatts. And in these projects, we also have to be able to connect with, you know, Pepco has to approve our interconnection to this project as well. We did some renderings, just to give you, give you a sense of what the site will, looks like now and what it will look like once the solar panels are installed. So this is currently how it looks from, you know, from Watkins Mill, sort of looking northeasterly, I guess. What would you say, east?
I think it's actually west.
West, sorry.
Yeah.
And then you can, it's kind of faint, but you could kind of see that we, we rendered what the, sort of the top of the solar panels may look like, or will look like, I should say.
The next slide has an arrow showing point to it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then we have a couple more, you know, angle, angle views. So this is currently south, and there is some landscape. You can see some trees are going to go in there as well. More view, and after the, the solar panels, I would say, are more of a, you know, not black, but like a navy blue, dark, dark blue. We, we made them white so you could kind of get a better sense of that, where they are. And the solar panels are, are open on the backside, a lot of solar panels, and they would be, we call them monofacial, so that their sunlight doesn't get to the back of the panel, but now they're bifacial, so sunlight can get the back of the panel and produce energy that way.
Oh, really? So even, even at that angle, they're going to pick up a little bit as the sun moves around and it's hitting it from the backside?
Yeah, that's right. Because it reflects off the ground and other things.
Sure, sure.
And it greatly improves, improves production.
So back to the question, what's the turf underneath?
It'd be grass, right?
Yeah. So currently, it's, it's a, it's basically all the spoils from the previous construction, and we're going to be regrading that area. And so it's just, it's, nothing's leaving the site, it's just going to be spread into a more flat.
And seeded.
What's that?
And seeded only.
Yeah, yeah, there'll be various pollinators and grasses put in.
Can I ask a very basic question? Did you ever consider putting it over the parking lot?
We, we have some going into the parking lot. That's part of the other phases of the project.
But, I mean, you, you, you've got tremendous amount of parking over there, and there are so many new buildings that have gone up, or projects that are going up, where they protect the cars, they get the sunlight, they produce, and you don't get this glare, this heat island coming off from the macadam when there aren't any cars in the parking lot. So it's, it's being utilized twenty-four-seven essentially.
We, we are putting, we are planning to put solar panels in the parking lot as well. We were here in April for the, for the, we have two separate permits, and one was for the parking lot.
Ah, okay.
So we broke them up.
So the, the capacity then with the parking, including the parking lot and this, would that be sufficient to do what? How many, how many buildings can you?
We, we will provide forty to fifty percent of that building's load with this combined project.
Combined project?
Yeah. I believe, we would love to go and, you know, expand it. If you, as you know, the parking lot to the southwest has the COVID tent.
Yep.
We originally were going to go there. We, we, we brokered this deal with Kaiser in twenty-eighteen.
Before.
Before that, and so we would have loved to go in more places, but there are just all kinds of limitations there. The building casts a shadow itself, so you don't, generally don't want to put it, but I'd say it's eight or nine hundred kilowatts in the parking lot that we're proposing.
Thank you. Didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's a good question.
That's a great question, yeah. I didn't realize it was that much.
The carport, I, I want to, you know, also note, the, the carport is supported by the Maryland Energy Administration. They're providing grant funds, and we're, we're going to install five car chargers as a part of that, and it does provide.
That's what I thought you were going to add.
Yeah, that's where I was going.
So it provides shades, it helps with the heat island effect. It looks good, I mean, I think, I'm a little subjective, right? But it looks good. We did one at the Shady Grove Facility in Rockville that you can drive by, it'll be the very, it'll be the same.
Yeah.
Structures.
Great. Are you done with your presentation, or do you have more to?
I think I'm done. Bear with me. The, just for your reference, this, this is two of our projects. This is in Germantown at the MNCPPC, and then this, one on the right is in Dorchester County. We call it Glassy Wing. Just a couple of projects, but we've been in Maryland since two thousand and four. But that, that's in our presentation.
All right. Questions?
It's awesome.
Okay. That's not a question.
Oh.
All right.
Is it awesome?
If there are no questions for the applicant's team, let's go to the, is there anyone in the public that would like to testify on this? Obviously, there's going to be sitting there in public, so you're in. And I do see someone on a participant online, so let me offer the opportunity for them to comment if that's what they're on for. Give that just a minute, and see if they want to raise their hand for online testimony. Jasmine, why don't you go ahead and do the recommendation then while we're waiting on that?
Okay. So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, findings, and recommendation, grant AFP-nine-three-six-nine-dash-twenty-twenty-two and EMV-nine-three-five-one-dash-twenty-twenty-two, find it in conformance with Sections Twenty-Four dash one seventy and Twenty-Four dash one seventy-two A of the City Code.
Great, thanks. It occurs to me that the instructions might have happened for the online comment after somebody joined. So tech team, I'm sorry to take this out of order, but would you play the instructions again for how to comment?
If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay, thank you very much. And I don't see a hand up. Just as kind of an aside, I, I don't have any real issues with the application, but as, in your experience of doing these in non-parking lot sites, so across a, a greenfield or something, what, what is the ultimate kind of landscape vegetation maintenance that ends up happening? Is it, is it just, you, you kind of do indigenous grasses and it's fine, or what, what ends up happening?
What we do in our, we have a technical specification, and we require that all our projects have a pollinator habitat now in there. I mean, we're seeing folks put sheep and things like that and grazing and, and all that, but the, you know, pollinator habitats are generally, and it's, you know, manageable, you know, native grasses that don't grow too high, right? Because we don't want them shading the, the system. So that, that is basically what, as Nick had said, what we do.
And there's still enough residual light to support whatever's going on there with?
Yeah, the, the rose spaces are, I don't exactly if they're nine or ten feet.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's pretty wide. You can, you can walk through there and drive a lawnmower through and that kind of thing.
Great.
Yeah, the, sell Kaiser on a herd of goats.
What's that?
Rent Kaiser a herd of goats.
Apparently, the goats will chew through the wire, so.
Okay. Stick with sheep. Go for dinner.
Wow. All right. No testimony? Any, any concerns, questions on the recommendation?
No, I think it's great.
I think it's great also.
I'm even more impressed with the grasses. I think it's a great idea. I was a little worried about the turf.
Can I, can I make one small comment?
Yeah.
I really want to thank the staff for working with us. They've been really great. We've been working for a long time, and they've been really supportive and helpful, so I want to thank them for all the hard work.
Appreciate that. We know they do, they do hard work, and they do good work. Thanks for mentioning that.
Yes, thank you.
All right. If there's no further comment, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report, findings, and recommendation, grant AFP-nine-three-six-nine-dash-twenty-twenty-two and EMV-nine-three-five-one-dash-twenty-twenty-two, finding them both in conformance with Section Twenty-Four One Seventy and Twenty-Four One Seventy-two A of the City Code.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All on paper, please say aye.
Aye. Enthusiastically.
Enthusiastically, aye. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing the phase two.
The second phase, yeah.
Is it okay to call it an electric project by faith, please? Or just?
Excellent joke, excellent.
All right. Next up, we have election of officers, as we do with January. I want to do a quick discuss, side discussion and ask you all to move forward with that or give an opportunity for the Commissioners not here tonight to participate at the next meeting, or at least understand if.
Yeah, without pressing reason, I, I would, I'd love to have, be there. Everyone is, can be here.
They can be here, yeah.
All right. Let's, if, if, are you all on paper there?
It's fine with me.
Okay.
It extends your vice chairmanship for another.
Another week, I, two weeks.
And all the many, many.
There are extenuating circumstances, and I want to be sure that they're, they're at least, they have the opportunity to, to attend if they're able and want to, so.
Does the city have enough money to pay us or increase salaries?
For another two weeks, yeah. Another, another three weeks. All right. And with that, we read from the commission. Lloyd, may I start with you?
Nothing else to say, except Happy New Year and looking forward to working with everybody for another active season.
Okay. Same here.
Nothing for me.
Matt, did he? Just like Lloyd, it could be an active year, so it's, it's exciting.
It looks like a lot of things are stacking up to, to be, to be happening. Not the least of which are the fine work you all are involved in in getting our zoning ordinance rewritten.
Yeah, that's, that could be the most exciting part, weirdly enough.
Sometimes I don't know whether you say that to be provocative.
I'm not really sure myself.
Okay, from staff, Greg.
Nothing, well, nothing much for me tonight. Happy New Year to each of you as well. Couple of dates, you said busy year coming up. Next meeting is January eighteenth for the planning commission. We have a joint public hearing for Lake Forest Mall rezoning and sketch plan that's scheduled for January seventeenth. I believe I've heard from all of you on that, so thank you. January twenty-third and February twenty-seventh are two joint work sessions on the housing element of the master plan.
Oh, yeah.
Again, I've heard from all of you as of, up to date on that, so again, thank you for that. Like I said, next meeting is January eighteenth.
Do me a favor. This is a complete random thought, but as you're reading dates, it occurs to me, we had a couple of near misses last year on, on holidays, religious observances. Would you double-check kind of the spring dates and make sure we don't coincide with anything that would be?
You mean the Planet Christians dates?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we looked at it from, based off our discussion from last year, so we should be, we should be good.
Would it be possible to send out the calendar like you did, like we have in the previous year, so we can put it in our?
If I have not done that already, I apologize. I can definitely do that.
Oh, okay. I'll see that.
Yeah, I will, I will send you that. I apologize.
It's worth its weight in gold. I'm embarrassed to say, but it's, thank you, if you send those out.
I can do that.
Thank you. Mr. Slifting, Director Slifting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have, I did want to share with you, last night at the mayor and council's regular meeting, there was some impassioned comment, public comment, which came over Zoom, from a Lindsay Boe, Bowie, who lives at nine thirty-five Clopper Road, that's the Gateway Apartments. She viewed your December seventh meeting and, in particular, your, your discussion of the proposed apartment building at Brooks and Park Avenue in Old Town. And she expressed it, that she believed there was a breach of decorum, that the homeowners were cheering, yelling, arguing with developers, making statements regarding, in particular, regarding renters, and she's a renter herself. And she objected to the comments about renters bringing crime, being transient, and not really part of the community. And she also expressed that she thought it was a problem that the commission did not rein in those individuals, and that the meeting really was an unfriendly environment. And, and she, she said that, you know, she, she was watching from home, but she would have considered a very intimidating space to be here at that meeting, given those discussions. She went on to talk about, you know, the historic inequities that exist, you know, over time. And in particular, that the inequities of people that can or cannot buy their own housing and have to rent. And she talked about discriminating practices and the need to rectify past wrongs, and so that we really do indeed have an inclusive city. And you know, our strategic plan has a big focus on equity. I just wanted to make you aware of this. Mayor Ashman said he couldn't agree with her more and hope that Mrs. Bowie, or Ms. Bowie would get more involved in the city, because we, we really need to hear voices like hers. And Councilmember Spiegel also agreed with everything she said, and we need to continue to do our part for equity and inclusion and continue to put policies in place accordingly. And then, of course, Councilmember Wu said ditto to everything, so obviously he agreed. But I, I just wanted to make you aware of that conversation that was happening, and it, it also came up at our senior leadership team. The city manager mentioned it this morning. So I thought you should be aware of it.
And as we see this come back, it would be probably appropriate then to acknowledge some of our master plan commitments and our strategic plan commitments to, to exactly what you're talking about as part of that presentation and not, not limited to just the, the proposal on, on the application.
Yeah. Rereview what the Central Business District of the city of Gaithersburg is defined as. Yeah.
Yep. All good.
And that's it. Thank you.
I wish she was here in person. That would have been, that would have been helpful.
Yeah. Yeah. Don't need to put her through that, but yeah.
Okay. Anything else to update us on? Okay.
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. Frank, thanks for being here. Anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. All right. If there's nothing else, have a good evening. We're adjourned.
Recording stopped. That's a Tuesday. That's the Lake Forest Mall sketch plan. And then the following day, the Wednesday, is the commission's regular meetings. The first and the fifteenth would be the commission's regular scheduled meetings, and then you have a joint work session on the twenty-seventh. And then the January twenty-third as well. A lot on these, a lot of stuff coming down the road. I said, I've heard from you on everything. I haven't called for the February regular meetings yet, but you're updated. I haven't heard from you on everything. I haven't called for the February regular meetings yet, but you're updated. I haven't heard from you on everything. I haven't called for the February regular meetings yet, but you're updated. I haven't heard from you on everything. I haven't called for the February regular meetings yet, but you're updated. I haven't heard from you on everything. I haven't called for the February regular meetings yet, but you're updated. I haven't heard from you on everything. I haven't called for the February regular meetings yet, but you're updated. I haven't heard from you on everything. I haven't called for the February regular meetings yet, but you're updated.